This livestream brought to you by the Excelsior Citizen and these generous sponsors.
The Simmons Sales Team, your hometown Realtors.
Our Excelsior Springs Hospital, where better care is right in your backyard.
For the we're talking about our dedication to preventing and restoring power outages, our pursuit of safety, or providing the best member experience possible, we are relentless in serving our communities.
Since 1974, Chuck Anderson Ford has proudly served the community's automotive needs. From new and pre-owned vehicles to parts and service, they've been there in the past and they'll be there in the future. Visit Chuck Anderson Ford today. Find out how you can advertise with Excelsior Springs' number one community resource. Visit excelsiocitizen.com today.
Press it.
Recording in progress.
Recording in progress.
Good evening. It is 6:00 PM on July 21st, 2025, and I'll call our regular city council meeting in order. We will begin with an opening prayer by Pastor Marvin Clay of Barbara Barbie Memorial Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance. Welcome Pastor.
Blessings. Thank you. Let us bow our heads for a moment of prayer. Eternal God and Creator and Substainer, we gather this evening not merely as officials, but as neighbors and servants of this beloved city. We thank you for Excelsior Springs, for its history, its heart, and its hope still unfolding. As we begin this meeting, we pause to acknowledge your presence among us. Guide every conversation, every vote, every vision with your wisdom. Where there's tension, grant us grace. Where there's uncertainty, grant us clarity. Where there's division, grant us the courage to listen and to love. Lord, help this council steward the trust of its citizens with integrity and compassion. Let this chamber be more than just a room of decisions. Let it be a table of dignity where policies reflect the pulse of the people. Bless the leaders, the workers, the families, and the forgotten. Remind us of that good governance is an extension of good neighborliness. May Excelsior Springs continue to be a place of renewal for business, for youth, for elders, and for all seeking a better day. And when this meeting closes, let us leave not only with motions passed, but with hearts moved towards justice, mercy, and unity. Amen.
Thank you Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Could we have the city clerk deliver the roll call of council members, please?
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spawn?
Yes.
At this time, I will invite any visitors who would like to speak to the council. If you would like to speak, make sure you've signed in, stepped to the podium, state your name, your address, and your reason for coming tonight. And I don't see an immediate rush, so I will assume there are no visitors who would like to speak. And so at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the special city council meeting of June 30th, 2025.
I move that we approve the minutes of the special city council meeting of June 30th, 2025.
Second.
I've got a dual in the second category. All in favor of approving the minutes of the special city council meeting of June 30th, 2025, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll pose like sign. Minutes are approved. And now I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it has been printed and presented before you.
I move we approve the agenda for the 7/21/25 regular city council meeting as presented.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spawn?
Yes.
First item on the agenda, and I'm looking at the screen up here. Chuck Duckworth said he was probably going to zoom in, but I don't see him yet. First item on the agenda is consideration of approval for sale of liquor at the Springs Restaurant. And our acting liquor control agent, in absent of Chief Dog, Captain Robert Warner, will present the details of this consideration to the council. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Presenting a new liquor license application for the Niche's Italian Deli and Market located at 1500 Carney Road. The application-
Springs is first.
Yeah, the Springs is first.
Oh, I apologize.
Yeah, no worries.
The Springs Restaurant located at 415 St. Louis Avenue. The applicant has met all the necessary requirements, including obtaining at least a 51% approval from surrounding property owners and tenants, as is required for a new license. All the paperwork is in order and there are no concerns at this time. Happy to answer any questions you may have on this one.
Hearing no questions for Captain Warner. This is a simple motion and will require a motion to approve along with the second.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the liquor license for the Springs Restaurant as presented.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spawn?
Yes.
Number two on the agenda is also consideration of approval for the sale of liquor at Donnies' Deli. And again, Captain Warner will present this ask of the council.
Now I am presenting the application for the Niche's Italian Deli and Market located at 1500 Carney Road. Applicant has met all the requirements as well, including the 51% approval from surrounding property owners and tenants. Again, all paperwork is in order and there are no concerns on this one as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, again, this is only requires a simple motion, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the liquor license for Donnies'. Donna Chelle's? I've heard it pronounced both ways.
D'Niche's.
D'Niche's.
I make a motion to approve the liquor license for sale of liquor at the Niche's Deli.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spawn?
Yes. And both of those liquor licenses are approved. Thank you Captain Warner.
Thank you.
Number three on the agenda is a public hearing for 353 tax abatement for 328 East Broadway. And before we open that public hearing, I'd like to ask Ms. Laura Meis from Community Development to give the staff report regarding that ask, and then we'll open the public hearing.
Thank you Mayor. Good evening Mayor, members of the council. The Community Development Department has for your consideration this evening an application for Chapter 353 tax abatement for the property of 328 East Broadway. This is formerly known as the Colonial Hotel and has been obtained by Ms. Susan Blazer, who is planning an entire remodel of the interior and repairs to the exterior that will include rebuild of the balconies, repair of the roof, masonry repair, restored windows, I believe 72 windows that she is restoring, restoring floors, including putting in HVAC, repairing plumbing, a fire alarm system, guttering, and again, the complete interior remodel. This application was considered by the Excelsior Springs Redevelopment Corporation and found that it met all requirements for tax abatement. It was also considered by the Historic Preservation Commission for the rebuild of the balconies and was approved for that as well. The applicant and her contractors will obtain any other further permits as necessary. The investment is expected to be $476,626.80, which makes it eligible for Level C. So that means that it meets requirements for tax abatement for the cost of improvements or 100% abatement for 10 years and then 50% abatement for five years, whichever comes first. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about this application.
All right. I will entertain a motion to open a public hearing on the 353 tax abatement for 328 East Broadway.
I make a motion to open a public hearing for 353 tax abatement for 328 East Broadway.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spawn?
Yes. We will open the public hearing for one minute, and if there are no individuals
wishing to speak publicly on this issue, then we will close the meeting after a minute. Public hearing is opened at 6:09 PM.
Good thing we got a new battery in that clock.
I know. Well, I got the stopwatch here.
Might need music for this.
We need the Jeopardy music.
Yeah.
I'm gonna do that one of these days.
Well, it's 10. It's 10.
60 seconds.
Okay.
Silence is awkward.
I'll make you let it.
Also golden.
All right, hearing no public comment. The public hearing is closed at 16:10 PM. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing, is what I will do.
I move that we close the public hearing for 353 tax abatement for 328 East Broadway.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spawn?
Yes. For the record, public hearing is closed at 6:11 PM. And now, we'll move on
to agenda item number four, which is consideration of redevelopment agreement for 328 East Broadway Avenue, ordinance number 25-07-01. You've already heard the staff report. Is there any further comments or questions for Ms. Laura? Okay, hearing none. We have before us an ordinance approving the 328 East Broadway Avenue project amendment to the amended development plan submitted by the Excelsior Springs Redevelopment Corporation, authorizing certain tax abatements for the project area and approving a redevelopment agreement. I'll entertain a motion to take ordinance number 25-07-01 to second reading.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to take ordinance 25-07-01, consideration of redevelopment agreement for 328 East Broadway Avenue to second reading.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spawn?
Yes. And for the second reading, we have before us an ordinance approving the 328
East Broadway Avenue project amendment to the amended development plan submitted by the Excelsior Springs Redevelopment Corporation, authorizing certain tax abatements for the project area and approving a redevelopment agreement. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 25-07-01.
Move to approve ordinance, shitting ordinance number 25-7-1, consideration of redevelopment agreement with 328 East Broadway Avenue.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spawn?
Yes. And ordinance number 25-07-01 is approved. Thank you Laura.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, number five, is consideration of preliminary and final plat for easily farm lots one and two, ordinance number 25-07-02. And presenting is Mallory Brown, our Community Development Director. Welcome Mallory.
Thank you. Good evening Mayor, members of the council. Before you this evening is consideration of a preliminary and final plat for lots one and two of the easily farm. This is approximately 40 acres located at the northwest corner of Oric Road and northeast 124th. This was properly noticed and a public hearing was held before the Planning and Zoning Commission, all the way back on April 28th. It's taken us some time to get the proper documents from the surveyor, but we have them now. And I understand that the owner is anticipating the sale of this property, so we're excited for that to happen. The property will remain residential use, and then lot two will be maintained as ag at this current time. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Hearing no questions. We have an ordinance before us approving a preliminary plat and final plat for lots one and two easily farm a subdivision in the city of Excelsior Springs, Clay County, Missouri. I will entertain a motion to take ordinance number 25-07-02 to second reading.
I make a motion to take ordinance 25-07-02, consideration of preliminary and final plat for easily farm lots one and two to second reading.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spawn?
Yes. And for that second reading, we have before us an ordinance approving a preliminary plat and final plat for lots one and two easily farm a subdivision in the city of Excelsior Springs, Clay County, Missouri. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 25-07-02.
I move we approve ordinance number 25-07-02, consideration of preliminary and final plat for easily farm lots one and two.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spawn?
Yes. Ordinance number 25-07-02 is approved. Thank you Mallory.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is number six, consideration of sanitary sewer connection with annexation and utility services agreement, resolution number 1589. And again, presenting is Mallory Brown.
Thank you. Good evening again. I received a request from the property owner, which is 3M Property Reserve LLC, for an additional, approval of additional sanitary sewer connection for property at the northeast corner of Old Quarry Road and northeast 144th Street. The property is in unincorporated Clay County and is currently going through the approval process for a lot split with Clay County. We have, the city has commented on it. It does comply with our regulations and therefore could easily be annexed into the city of Excelsior Springs in the future. We already serve one, a home on the property with sanitary sewer, and we have a relatively large sanitary sewer easement that already runs across the property. So it makes perfect sense that we would serve this property when it's split off. It is a future connection, so I'm not sure that there are plans in the near future for development, but if there were to be a home developed on this property, the sewer connection would be necessary. So that's the request before you this evening. So you're considering the resolution approving the request, and then the annexation and utility services agreement is included as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Hearing no questions, I will entertain a motion to approve resolution number 1589, resolution approving connection to the city of Excelsior Springs sanitary sewer system.
Move to approve. Go ahead.
I move that we approve resolution, resolution number 1589, consideration of sanitary sewer connection with annexation and utility services agreement.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern? Mayor Pro Tim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spawn?
Yes. And resolution number 1589 has been approved. Thank you Mallory.
Thank you.
Number seven on the agenda tonight is consideration of agreement with American Youth Soccer Organization, resolution number 1590. And presenting tonight is Nate Williams, our Excelsior Springs Parks Rec and Community Center Director. Welcome Nate.
Good evening Mayor, members of the council. So this agreement is essentially identical to one that you guys had approved in the spring. The spring was more of a trial run for a new program. This took over our tires and training program and added more structure and coaching and things like that from that AYSO could supply for us. So this is the same program, just for the fall season now. Now that it went very well in the spring, no issues, and participants seem to enjoy it a lot more. So moving forward, we'll plan to do this in a yearly agreement, but at least for this run, we wanted to try it out first. So happy to answer any questions.
Hearing no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 1590, a resolution approving a letter of agreement with American Youth Soccer Organization.
I move we approve resolution number 1590, consideration of agreement with American Youth Soccer Organization.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spawn?
Yes. Resolution number 1590 is approved. Thank you Nate.
Thanks.
Number eight on the agenda is consideration of memorandum of understanding with Urban Trail Company, resolution number 1591. And again, presenting is Nate Williams.
Still here. Have a big group of anxious people back here, though, I believe, for this one. So again, just like you said, this is a MOU with Urban Trail Co. to develop new single track trails on the property owned by the city near the airport golf course. There's a map of the potential probable trail route as Exhibit A within the agreement. Philip has been the mastermind with this. I'm just, I guess, up here to be the person to present it, but if you have any questions on this, we can get them.
You know a guy.
Yeah, yeah. Know a guy.
Any questions for Nate on this MOU? All right, hearing none. I will entertain a motion to approve resolution number 1591, a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with Urban Trail Company.
Mr. Mayor. Resolute 1591, consideration memorandum of understanding with Urban Trail Company.
Second.
All right. Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim St. John?
Absolutely.
Mayor Spawn?
Enthusiastically, yes. Thank you Nate.
Thank you.
Resolution number 1591 is approved, and I would just state for the record, Phil, I remember when this dream was in its infancy, and it's been, what, three years at least?
Probably.
Yeah.
Sounds all right.
Sometimes-
Feels like a little more, though.
Sometimes a good thing is like watching paint dry. We've had that conversation, too. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Number 10 on the agenda is, wait a minute, no, number nine. Number nine, I would not cut Chad out of this opportunity to speak. Thanks for coming, guys. Number nine is consideration of change order number three to the contract with Mega KC for the Dry Fork Greenway Project, resolution number 1592. And Chad Bertsong, our illustrious public works director, will address the council with the details of this resolution.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you just stated, before you night is change order three for Mega KC on the Dry Fork Greenway Project. It consists of five items. The first one is a slow paving at their reinforced concrete box for $4,905.14. Number two is reinforced sidewalk toe wall for $10,101.30. Number three is replacing existing sanitary sewer encasement for $13,312.57. Four is the curb and gutter elevation adjustments, $1,536.74. And then number five is the bigger one, the water main relocation. And I won't go into detail with that tonight, as we've discussed many times at the work sessions over the last two to three weeks. That was totaling $644,784.45. The total of all that change order totals $674,640.20. For funding for change order three, the water fund is contributing $380,000, since the Caldwell portion is outside the project limits. The remaining project funds has enough balance to contribute $139,640.20. And then tonight, before this meeting at four o'clock, capital improvements met and allocated $155,000 of capital improvement dollar money to make up the difference. So it is a push for the expense versus the revenue. The total new contract price is $4,279,341.12. And that does leave about $20,000 left over for additional change orders for the remainder of the project. Resolution is attached. Be happy, all the supporting documents are in, and we are expecting the DNR permit at any time, so hopefully we can get right started on it.
As we discussed, it's about a two month timeframe.
Right. They said about 60 days.
Thank you.
Chad, I was really hoping you would go into detail about the routing and-
Well, I can if you'd like.
For John's sake.
We got new batteries in the clock, so we gotta track every minute of it.
That's right. Any questions or comments?
Just to clarify, the 60 days is not when it's going to be back open.
No, that's when the water line will be done. They'll still be doing some other things as they progress down through the project. They can start on the storm pieces that are in clout with it, but-
Are you still looking at October as the opening date?
Possibly. They did not ask for any days on this because they were ahead of schedule. They originally planned it not to the fall, and they were shooting for June, and then this happened, so they may be back to the regular schedule. So if they do need more days, they'll probably have to come back for additional, on a future change order to add days to it. But right now, they said about 60 days for the water line.
Well, they can add days. I just assumed they wouldn't add any more money.
That is, I hope this is it. Once they get above ground, this is really the last thing in ground, so hopefully that's the last one.
Great.
And looking at the layout, looks like that's running down through the middle of Caldwell.
It goes right through the middle of Caldwell. You got existing sanitary sewer up there, so if you've been down Caldwell, it's not very wide anyway. So this will put a little zipper strip of concrete patch back in there, and then we'll probably come back and do a full restoration in the upcoming years through an overlay on that area.
Okay, I'm gonna say it looks like-
Yeah, it does not count for a whole new street. It's just roughly a four foot strip for the trench.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
It's probably the water line.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments for this resolution? Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve resolution number 1592, a resolution approving change order number three to the contract with Mega KC Corporation for the Dry Fork Greenway Project.
I make a motion to approve resolution 1592, consideration of change order number three to the contract with Mega KC for the Dry Fork Greenway Project.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yeah.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spawn?
Yes. Thank you Chad.
Thank you.
And now, I will entertain, no, wait a minute, number 10, June revenue report and financials for review, and I do not see Fonda. Are you presenting on her behalf?
Yes. So the revenue report and expenditure approval list prepared for June are as follows. Appropriations for June 5th were $392,909.80. Appropriations for June 5th were $392,909.08. Appropriations for June 12th were $704,848.25. Appropriations for June 18th were $476,147.17. Appropriations for June 26th were $279,747.62. Payroll for June 13th was $410,369.31. Payroll for June 30th was $469,176.30. For a total expenditure for the month of $2,733,797.46. Total revenue received was $2,654,991.
Any questions for Molly on the revenue report financials? Hearing none, this requires no council action. It's for review only, so thank you Molly for stepping in for Bonda. And we'll move into remarks and we'll begin with our city manager.
Okay. I received a kind of neat email this week. This is from International Code Council, sort of a member group where they are commenting to each other and they're wanting to bring attention to the code enforcement efforts that are proceeding in Excelsor Springs. And this is kind of some of the quotes from this. The city of Excelsor Springs has taken a compassionate and proactive step in code enforcement. What sets their work apart is the relational approach they bring. Trish states, "I'm not here to be the bad guy. I'm here to help the community look and feel its best." Excelsor Springs is an example of how code enforcement can uplift a community, not by being punitive, but by being supportive, respectful, and persistent. Congratulations to Trish and the entire team whose efforts are restoring pride in neighborhoods and protecting property values. So I thought that was a really nice thing for members to share amongst themselves, to kind of share good work.
Kudos to Trish.
Yeah.
Excellent. All right, we will move down to the other end of the dais for comments from Councilman Rennie.
I'm just very pleased with both of our items on tonight's agenda. That scene redevelopment at 328 East Broadway and it's exciting to see and that work and looking forward to it and it's much needed in our community as well as the Urban Trail Company. And we've all been just sharing in that and it's exciting to see what that'll bring to our city, both for our residents and for many, many folks coming in to visit our wonderful city and ride the trails and walk the trails.
That's right.
Walk the trails.
Or run. Russell, if you're watching. Thank you Gary.
Nothing to see me.
Nothing to see me, okay. Councilman Spear?
Nothing for me.
Mayor Pro Tim St. John, you've always got something.
Well, yeah, and this is, you know, it kind of, I like at least talking about people who've been here for a while. And I saw that Joe Spear's been here 44 years. There's people in this audience that aren't that old, you know. You know, that's kind of the way it goes.
I'd say that's pretty exciting.
That is. That's really cool stuff. And Nate kind of here's 21 years. Again, you know, the folks that make their career here. We are very fortunate and blessed because of that.
Love seeing Joe on the job. He always honks and waves when he comes by. I get a lot of honks and waves.
Get a waves and I just get a finger.
I get a lot of honks and waves. I think it's because of where I live, a block and a half from the city compound.
Well, I wonder which finger you're talking about.
Well, no.
It's your brother.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. My closing remark will reflect upon the Mayor's Block Party that was held last Saturday night out at Shamrock Hills Vineyards and Winery. And it was to raise funds for the VFW Memorial Hall. And it was well attended and had some good music and some food. A lot of people donated food and donated time to prepare it. And I contacted Denise Riley this afternoon. She said they raised a little over $3,000 and some change for the VFW. So I thought that was a great community effort, even though it was not within the city limits. Mike and Denise have a profound presence in our community and I just appreciate them for doing that. They called me up one night. It was late and they said, "Could we have a Mayor's Block Party in Ray County?" I said, "Well, I suppose get it registered."
The mayor's there.
So the mayor had to show up. So anyway, if there is nothing else, I will entertain a motion to close the meeting pursuant.
One other thing Mayor.
Yes.
Along those lines, the Excelsor Citizen did a fundraiser for the Bets Club.
Yes.
With their T-shirts and their T-shirts came in this week and I think there were like 700 ordered and there's been a cry for more, so they're opening it again temporarily to allow those that want to participate a chance to buy some T-shirts and it's a very nice gesture. I appreciate it.
And the proceeds of the sales of those T-shirts also went to the VFW?
Yes.
And my wife was so excited. She called me this afternoon. She goes, "We got our yee-haw shirt."
I wore mine Sunday to church.
I heard your wife say you were a yee-haw.
She says a lot of things, John, but we're on camera, so keep it clean here. All right. With that, I will entertain a motion to close the meeting pursuant to Sections 610.021.1 and 610.021.2, revised statutes of Missouri.
I make a motion to close the meeting pursuant to the revised statutes of Missouri, Chapter 610.021, PRCs 1 and 2.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. And our meeting is now closed. Thanks for coming everyone. Josh.